Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 26 Board of Selectmen meeting. The Chair reserves the right to call items on the agenda out of order. The times that are listed for these items are approximate times, and items may be reached earlier or later than posted times. The listing of items is those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. It's 7:00 PM, Citizens Input, and then topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. 7:05 Selectmen's Update. 7:10 Board of Selectmen Reorganization. 7:15 NPS LLC Public Hearing Alteration of Premise. 7:25 Splitsville Howl at the Moon Public Hearing Change of Hours on Entertainment License. 7:35 William G. Keegan Jr. Discussion of Trash Program. And 7:50 William G. Keegan Jr. Town Manager Update. John, would you like to lead us in the process?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we take the agenda out of order and vote on the, discuss the third topic, the reorganization of board.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to have Town Council address the board.
Thanks, Kate. Good evening, through you, Mr. Temporary Chair, Kate Connolly with Lewis &amp; Costello Company and FAV. I was asked to look at the issue of the votes on the reorganization that was taken on, I believe it was May 12th. And I reviewed the tape, and I reviewed the applicable law, of which there is very little, and sent a letter, which hopefully you've all had a chance to read by now. Boards have discretionary authority to handle reorganization however they want to, according to whatever their policies are. There is some guidance in Robert's Rules of Order, which the board has not officially adopted, but by review of those rules, and again, it's somewhat informal, the requirement is simply that nominations be taken, and there's no requirement for a second. What happened at the meeting on the tape that I reviewed is there appeared to be, although nothing was done incorrectly, there appeared to be a little bit of inconsistency, maybe ambiguity, in the end result as to what the board intended. So it is within your discretion to rescind and revote those positions if that's what you choose to do. And if you're going to do that, my recommendation would be that you rescind the whole slate, all three positions, Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk, so that there's no confusion as to what's, whether there's still a position out there that's been filled. Then take nominations, and then revote all of them this evening in order. I would recommend that Selectmen Mitchell conduct all three of the votes, because another thing that could cause ambiguity is, these votes are effective immediately unless somebody declines their position. If you elect a Chair, and we then switch and have the Chair do the remaining votes, that might cause a little bit of inconsistency as to how the meeting was run. This part of the meeting should be run by one person, in my opinion. So I would, I would recommend that Selectmen Mitchell conduct all of the votes, and then, once the reorganization is done, then whoever's voted the new Chair, assuming that you vote a Chair, can go ahead and handle the rest of the meeting. Does that make sense?
Anybody have any questions on that?
Just, I agree with everything you're saying. Just a question, if the Board of Selectmen has not adopted Robert's Rules of Order, are we going to proceed under Robert's Rules of Order, or something different? In other words, if something happens again, and we're finding ourselves in a position that says, "Well, Robert's Rules of Order weren't really there to begin with." So I think it's a broader question for, I think, all of the boards in town, Planning Boards, Zoning Board, follow Robert's Rules of Order until something comes up, and then we take a revisit, a look at it. So moving forward, are we using the Robert's Rules of Order to hold this meeting?
The Board would have to adopt that as our policy.
Yeah, you would have to adopt it. I know you also have a handbook that governs the various boards. We looked at that as well. That wouldn't apply to the Selectmen, of course, but by analogy, anything that you require your boards to do would be something that the Selectmen might want to consider doing, but you're not held to what's in that handbook. And you would have to vote, if you wanted to follow the conduct of all meetings under Robert's Rules, then you'd have to adopt that. But again, as we said in the opinion, there's nothing that governs the way you do this. Boards can choose to do this however they want. There was just so much ambiguity and so many questions that came out of that last meeting that it made sense. And again, if the board wants to, if the vote is not to redo it, then you'll be left with the votes that were decided, but it appeared to us, based on the fact that we were asked to look at it, that there was question amongst many people, other than just people on the board, as to who was elected and what was the intent.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we rescind all votes from the reorganization meeting two weeks ago.
Well, second.
All those in favor? Okay, I'm opening up for nominations. Anybody have nomination?
Just one point, one point of order. I would think would be appropriate to have the board vote to allow Chris to run the min, run the election process. So a motion would be in order to nominate Chris to run the nomination process.
Should I make that motion?
It should be one of the other members, yourself.
I make a motion to allow Chris Mitchell to run the election process and the reorganization.
I'll second that motion, but can I also, we've just taken a couple votes without any discussion, so from between now and when we finish the meeting, can we make a motion, and if we want to second it, but then have discussion before we vote?
Okay. Rookie here, sorry.
Oh, no, no.
If I may just jump in, Mr. Chair, as you typically do on motions, you do have to have a second, just not nominations for election. You don't need a second.
Okay, so need to vote on?
On the second.
On the second. Allowing me to run the rest of the election. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm opening up for nominations for Chairman.
I nominate Jim DeValles as Chairman.
I nominate John Gray as Chairman.
Can we just?
You can discuss them, and then take them in the order that you got them.
Okay. Is there any discussion on David's nomination? And then do we vote that one, or do we have discussion on the second nomination?
Again, no guidance on it. You can do it however you want, whatever makes sense.
Ginny, any discussion on your motion?
No, I just think John has proven himself to be a leader in regard to other position, the boards he's been on. He was Chairman of the Advisory Committee. He's also been Clerk, been Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and I think he would be perfectly able, capable, and to be a good Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, any other discussion on either? Okay, we'll take the first nomination. All those in favor of Jim DeValles as Chairman? Do we vote the second one too, or that was a majority, right?
Excuse me, once again, there's no guidance on how to do this, but typically, and as Robert's Rules, which is the only thing that does address this, says that you vote until you get a position filled. So even though I have heard that there are some towns that will vote the other positions, in my opinion, that could cause some confusion if you end up getting another three to two, then you're going to have to start all over again. So once a position is filled, it's filled. So at this point, you would go on to the next position, which is Vice Chair.
Okay.
But usually, you do say all those opposed and those abstaining, for the record.
Okay.
Correct?
So all those opposed to Jim DeValles being Chairman?
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to take nominations for Vice Chairman. I'd like to nominate Dave Feldman.
I'll second Dave Feldman.
Any other nominations? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those, okay, we're all good. Okay, nominations for Clerk.
I nominate Chris Mitchell as Clerk.
I'll second that if we don't need to.
I'll second Chris Mitchell for Clerk.
Okay, all those in favor of Chris Mitchell as Clerk?
Aye.
Okay.
Congratulations, everyone.
So I'm done?
Yeah. We can stay.
Yeah, okay. Want to get around it?
It's always the awkward move, you can figure it out next week.
Someone just go.
Sure. You all set?
Yep.
All set.
Thank you, and I won't be repetitive from last week. I probably use the same speech as I gave last week, so I look forward to a successful year and hopefully a cohesive year. So we'll go down to, we have a couple public hearings, one that starts at, actually, let's go backwards. We had a Citizens Input at seven o'clock that we skipped over to go into the reorganization. Is there anyone here for Citizens Input? Somebody, okay. Selectmen's Update at 7:05. Typically, the Chairman prepares this. I haven't prepared anything. I'll open it up to the board if there's anyone on the board that wants to give an update of anything over the last week or two weeks.
Yeah, I just have something. Tomorrow at 3:00 PM, Foxborough High School Boosters will be rededicating the Eddie Guy Flagpole, honoring Declan Maloney for his work with the birdhouses, and dedicating the new baseball and softball fields. All are welcome to attend. It should be a really good event. A lot of hard work went into, obviously, getting the fields built, getting them to the stage where they're, where they're at today, and I know, I know Declan's really worked hard to get those birdhouses up, and, you know, a lot of people to thank, so it should be a good event.
So that's at three o'clock behind the high school?
Behind the high school.
I'd just like to thank Mike Johns and everybody else that had a part in yesterday's Memorial Day celebration. It was, it was a great turnout. I've been marching in that, or at that parade with all the scouts and stuff for at least the last sixteen, seventeen years, and each year, the turnout gets better and better, and yesterday was a good showing. It was good. Nice remarks by John. Bill went a little long, but that's all right. No, it was a good, good showing for the town, and I hope, I hope with Mike's leadership that it just, and I know it'll just continue to grow, and it'll be the focus of the day. So thank you, everybody.
I would just like to say, and I echo those thoughts, that was really well done. I thought the band was sensational, by the way, as usual. Congratulations to them for that fine work, and to the speakers, who did a really nice job of capturing the moments of the guests, especially guest speaker was really quite, quite interesting to listen to, so it was a great day, and nice job to John as well for his comments as well.
Okay, anything else? Anyone want to bring up under Selectmen's Update? So it being 7:15, we have a NPS LLC agenda on the, item on the agenda for a public hearing on the alteration of premises, so if we could have the Clerk read the advertisement for the record?
Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 26, 2015, beginning at 7:15 in the Foxborough High School Media Center, South Street, on the application to alter the premise of an annual all alcohol beverage restaurant license for NPS LLC, doing business as Gillette Stadium. One Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass., Manager James J. Nolan Jr. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Okay, so welcome to NPS LLC. For the record, if you could just state your name, and we are obviously being televised as well.
Yes, James J. Nolan Jr.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Karen Semayo McDermott Quiltean Miller, Counsel to NPS.
Okay, so we have the application in front of us. Do you feel comfortable making a presentation, and then we can answer questions?
Yes.
I mean, ask questions?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. The application before you, as the board is familiar with, is for an amendment of the description of the licensed premises. I just want to, for the record, distinguish it from, sometimes, some licensees will make an application to amend the description of the premises to extend beyond its existing parameters. And so before Mr. Nolan's presentation, I just want to make it very clear that the footprint of the licensed premises remains the same. It remains unchanged. The changes are all within the existing premises, and the application submitted provides a copy of the footprint on the floor plan with the three upgraded areas that Mr. Nolan will be discussing, and we also have some handouts that will give you a little more in-depth information on each of those locations. And with that, I'll turn it over.
Sure. So I think as a, as a starting point, you know, why are we doing upgrades to our facility? Which brings us in front of the board today. Gillette Stadium opened in 2002, and we've seen a couple things that happened since 2002. One is the competition from our own product. The television product at home is immense. Flat panel TVs are cheap, they're in everyone's home, and the quality of the broadcast, between the red zone, between being able to watch multiple games, it's a very powerful product. So what we have been systemically doing is we've been upgrading Gillette Stadium at our cost to keep ahead of the curve, so that we're always finding new amenities and new things for our patrons who come down here on game day to see and use. So going back over the last several years, we added Wi-Fi to the building. First NFL facilities successfully add Wi-Fi. We've added, we put new scoreboards in, ribbon boards, club and suite upgrades. We've added ADA elevators, we've undergone some parking and traffic upgrades, and even gate entry upgrades, trying to improve every facet of the game day experience. So these three projects in front of you are geared toward improving the experience for the general fan, season ticket holder who comes in the building, and I'll walk through each of them. First, with respect to this application, we have met with Chief O'Leary, Chief Hatfield, and Bill Casper, you know, to review, to review the plans and make sure that we've incorporated any comments that Dave had into the process. As Karen mentions, this alteration exists within the existing stadium footprint, so it's inside the stadium gates. The areas where these properties sit were areas within our liquor license footprint, so we're not expanding the parameters. Generally, and I'll get into each club separately, we're going to run these like we run our Putnam Club, you know, so these are going to have a dedicated, a dedicated manager in these locations, our employee. There'll be our employees who'll be conducting the alcohol service. They're all team trained, following the guidelines of the liquor regulations, and, and for us, that's just the way we operate, so it's, it's, you know, standard operations for us, but we are treating it as a, like our Putnam Club property. So, and additionally, similar to what we do in the Putnam Club, you know, we're going to have, in Optum, in the Optum Lounge, and also in Cross Pavilion, we're going to have specific separate police details in those locations. It's the same thing we do in Putnam, both East and West, and we're going to follow a similar process here. And as I said, we've met with the Chief, and as you know, we meet with the Chiefs before every event that we hold, every ticketed event we hold. So it's always an evolutionary process, but from day one, these clubs will have dedicated Foxborough Police Officers in them. And also, we don't expect to have any issues in these clubs. One of the things is we have a very large season ticket holder base. Who knows there are repercussions to acting up in Gillette Stadium? So the incidents that Chief O'Leary has had to deal with, you know, over the past decade are far different than he handled over the decade before that, and in recent years, the behavior has been really good because of that. So in each of these locations, we're not adding new people who aren't season ticket holders into the building. It's the same pool of people, they're just new amenities for that pool of people coming in. So in your package, I'm going to start with the Optum Field Lounge. The Optum Field Lounge, as you can see in the picture and on the board, is located in our south end zone. It's in the area where we used to take out the seats for concerts, and going into the underside of the stadium. It is a paid membership, so it's a, currently, we have 800 members, and that's where we've capped it for this year. And each of those members pays a separate fee to get into that location, but each of them are season ticket holders. So this was only marketed to existing Patriot season ticket holders, and we started by approaching the most senior of our season ticket holders, because they've been with us the longest moving forward. Yeah, and so this, this property will be operate, in the same way we operate the Putnam Club, the same hours on game day. Additionally, this club in Cross, and I'll, I'll talk about the two together for a second, this, these are facilities that we can use on non-event day to expand our function business. You know, we're, we're currently, you know, I don't want you to hear a challenge, but there are times where we have events that want to come to Foxborough that we don't have the space to do it. And these two properties are going to allow us to bring more events to the stadium on non-game days. And, you know, in going over the past couple of years, the two things we've heard, and more so with Cross, is if you had a big open space that was nice, there are a lot of groups that are looking for that, and that's what Cross does. And the other thing that they bring up is hotels. So the big space will draw people to go to the hotel, and the hotel will draw people to us. So we think it dovetails nicely with some other construction going on in Foxborough now. On the second page, it's just some sample layouts of what we, of how we would lay out inside, inside the space, depending on the type of event. You know, on the top side is more of a game day set, you know, with, with tables inside for the members, and the bottom picture is more of a theater-style setup for a non-event day. The second one I'll mention is the Cross Pavilion. It sits in the old picnic zone, which those of you who've been in the building is familiar with. And as you can see from the picture, it's a large, open space on the inside, so as you can see, it will function very well as a function space on non-event days. But on event days, it will serve two purposes. It will be a higher-end pregame hospitality for up to 500 people, pregame, and it's very similar to how we operate the Dana Farber Fieldhouse. So it would open two and a half hours before kickoff, same way we do the Dana Farber Fieldhouse, and it would close 30 minutes before kickoff. Thirty minutes before kickoff, this space would be open to the general public. So any ticketed patron who's in the building, any season ticket holder who's come in, will be able to come and go from this property. So on cold days, they can get warm, on warm days, they can get cool, on wet days, they can get dry. When you go to the second and the two pages after that, these are just some example layouts that, you know, is the exact layout of the building, but we're looking at the different types of things we can do in there. So one is a theater-style seating with a large stage, and then on the second page is various configurations of tables and chairs. The third property, which is in a location near the Ubid ramp, between the Ubid ramp and the prime, a former Prime Sport Gate, this is, this is going to be called the DraftKings Sports Zone, and what DraftKings is, it's a fantasy football service where you can play different games week to week. It's a rapidly growing business, and what they wanted to bring to the stadium is a place on the concourse where people can come in and get fantasy sports information. So we'll have, for a one o'clock game, we'll have every TV on, every game on that's being played at one o'clock, and we'll have separate screens dedicated to specific fantasy stats. So people who are fantasy players, of which there's a significant number that, you know, both at home and come to the stadium, but this is a way for those who are playing the games to come here and get their real-time information. And this is essentially an existing, I'll call this a glorified concession stand more than anything else, and it's hard to see in this photo, but this is the concourse right here. So on nice days, it's, the space which, which was part of the concourse is now just enclosed. So on bad weather days, we can, we have doors that we can close to keep it tempered, but on nice days, and hopefully there's a lot of them, the doors will be wide open, so it'll be free-flowing from the concourse into it. So it really is a glorified concession stand, where essentially, we took a food court, you know, with a bunch of portables that we had corralled in a circle, and a bunch of portable beverage locations, and we've replicated those inside. So those are, those are the three projects. We're very excited to bring them on board, because, you know, I think it gives all of our fans just another reason to continue to come to games at Gillette Stadium beyond the product on the field.
Thank you. Anything else to add?
Nothing further right now, thank you.
So where it's a public hearing, there's going to be public input, but before we ask questions, can I rely on you, Bill? This is the first time that we're seeing it, so public safety, building inspector, have you coordinated that, and can you report back?
Yes, I can, I can say that all three, both the Fire Chief, Police Chief, and the Building Commissioner have all, have all reported on, have met with the stadium staff and, and all the advocates for this, for these changes. They have, both, all of them are satisfied with the, with the, with the information that they've received. A lot of their ideas have been incorporated into the plans, as well as the fact that the, the Building Commissioner has, has been monitoring the construction as it's been going on as well. He's already identified the occupancy of all, all the facilities as well, so there shouldn't be any questions beyond that that I'm aware of at this point.
And any report or review or closure from the Planning Board? Are they involved with this at this point?
I've not heard anything back from the Planning Board on this. Nothing on that, on that, on that level.
Okay. So before the board asks questions, is the Building, Building Inspector and Police Chief are here, anything different, or any input that you would want to add?
No, just that what we were late to, Mr. Keegan, from my, from my point of view, just the idea, we'll see if we'll reach one of these areas.
I hate to, yeah, if you could, come, come to the microphone.
We've had several meetings with Mr. Nolan, Mr. Briggs, Security Director, and Dan Murphy about the three facilities. As Mr. Keegan indicated, you know, my input was certainly received, and as we've gotten closer to the actual construction and the layout that you're seeing tonight, we have devised various operational plans, both for policing the locations, as well as ensuring, you know, security and operation. So I'm confident that these changes will not create any additional hazards at all.
Okay, thank you. Before we open it up to the board, we also have a public hearing scheduled for 7:25, so we're a little bit behind. Can we read that into the record that we opened the meeting, and we'll continue it till after the seven, the 7:15 hearing? And this is a, an item for Splitsville Howl at the Moon Public Hearing for the change of hours of entertainment license.
Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 140 will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 26, 2015, beginning at 7:25 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, South Street, on the request to amend the entertainment license of Splitsville Patriot Place LLC, or, excuse me, of SV Patriot Place LLC, doing business as Splitsville and Howl at the Moon, 220 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass., General 220 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass., General Manager Daniel Glaberson. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
So, we'll continue that hearing until the conclusion of this one. So, we'll open up to any questions from the board?
By removing the seats from the end zone, how many seats are it gonna be removed?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it's, I believe it's somewhere in the 2,000-seat range.
I had heard 2,500, I don't know if that's the number.
Yeah, I, I just got back in the office and ramping back up, so I don't have that number.
No, I know the feeling.
My tongue, but, but it is in that, you know, 2,000, you know, plus or minus range.
So, so given the licensing agreement that we have with the town, you have with the town, that would be a net loss in ticket revenue to the town. I just didn't know if there was anything in this model that would have that be shifted somewhere else and that the revenue stream would remain consistent.
You know, the, what this property will do is it will generate increased meals tax for the town specifically. So, I haven't done an analysis of what that meals tax would be versus the, the loss in ticket tax. But between the function business, we will see, you know, significant new meals tax money coming to the town.
Just one other question. The, right now, in lieu of taxes, the town owns the land underneath the stadium. But does the town own the land underneath the entire perimeter of this depiction?
Which, I'm sorry, which one are you referring to?
Right here. Maybe Bill Casper can answer this, is that the, some of these buildings, I don't know if they're on town land or if they're on Patriot Place land.
They're on the footprint that's owned by.
So, this, this perimeter is owned by the town? Okay.
And just as a point of process, and I know that the commissioner is aware of this, and we're happy to answer the questions, but from the legal consideration on the amendment of description of premises, of course, whatever the agreements in place are, if we need to have a separate discussion on those agreements, we're obviously happy to do that. But as it relates to the consideration for the amendment, we just wanna be sure to note on the record that, obviously, the financial consideration from that contract isn't part of the consideration under Chapter 138 for the amendment. And I know that you know that, Commissioner, I just need to do my job.
Now, those 2,000 season ticket holders that were in those, they just didn't get kicked to the curb. Did you relocate them somewhere in the stadium?
Yes. You know, we started that process two years ago. So, they all had the option to upgrade their seats to a higher-priced seat, to keep their seats in a same-price seat, or downgrade at their discretion. So, every one of them, not one, not one of them lost their season tickets by moving out. And we also gave that pool, we made sure that everyone in that pool who was impacted had the ability to opt into this membership if they so choose.
Okay. I've got two other quick questions. On non-event days, both the Cross and the Optum, how many people will they hold?
Well.
For functions?
The, for functions, they're both, and Bill could give you the exact number, they're both about 1,000 people is the occupancy permit. So, the way we would operate them is depending on, you know, what the event is, we would look at how many people we'd put in. So, theater-style, you're gonna end up with, you know, more people than if you're doing a, you know, wedding with a dance floor and a bunch of tables, so. But in any event, it wouldn't exceed the occupancy that the town has given to us for those properties.
Okay. And the, with the DraftKings, is that open to the public where you have the open doors, or is that a?
That's, it's literally, it literally open, well, I shouldn't say open to the public. You need to be, you need to have your ticket to get into the stadium. Once you're into the stadium, this is just essentially part of the concourse. So, you can come and go as often as you want.
You know, when I talked to Dan Murphy about this, he said that there was a capacity that you had envisioned and that if it was hitting capacity, you had the ability to close the doors to, to limit traffic into the concession area.
Yes, yeah. And that's something that we always, at every event, we always work with Chief O'Leary and Chief Hatfield in terms of, you know, the, you know, do things feel right? So, we're gonna, we're gonna watch that. That facility has the ability to operate on any day with the, I call it, these glass walls that are down indoors. And that, those doors are what, you know, define the egress capacity of the building and part of the overall capacity that we can put in there. So, if we, if we do that, we will be checking people in and out to make sure that we don't exceed the occupancy.
And then, Dan also said, as far as the Optus Field Lounge, in the first year, you're gonna limit capacity to 850?
Yeah, right now, it's 800 to 850. But it's gonna be limited, right now, we've stopped it at 800 members. Because we want them to all have a very positive experience. So, you know, we'll see, again, in conjunction with both chiefs, if we see that 800 people has a great experience and we can add another 100 and there's a demand for it, we would do that. If we find 800 is the right number, that's where we keep it. And similar with Cross, you know, we're gonna manage the number of people in there versus the occupancy permit. You know, so on game day, once we open it to the public, there's one door in and one door out. So, for us, it's gonna be a measured count to know the people we have in the building at one time.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, the building commissioner has certified that the Optum Lounge has a maximum capacity of 999 at this juncture. So, which means that there's still a couple hundred below that maximum capacity. It was, at the amount they're using, proposing at this time.
Is the Cross Pavilion intent to replace the pregame festivities that are currently taking place at Dana Farber?
No. There are, in the Dana Farber Fieldhouse, we run somewhere between, you know, during the regular season, I'll just say for round numbers, approximately 1,500 people a game in the Dana Farber Fieldhouse. So, the Cross Pavilion, there may be some people who used to purchase the Fieldhouse who come up to Cross. But the Cross is really geared toward a new membership program that, you know, people who are looking for a higher-end tailgate, that this would be an option for them. So, we will be, we'll still be operating the Dana Farber Fieldhouse. Because just from a capacity perspective in the Fieldhouse, the Cross just, even if we wanted to, it can't handle a full volume of it.
Now, with the Cross Pavilion, would you be having any events that you would sell tickets to?
It's possible, yeah. The, we haven't gotten that far down the line yet.
But would the sale of those tickets fall under the stadium agreement that you have with the town? In other words, the town would get the licensing fee from those tickets?
Yeah, because my understanding is that, you know, a paid ticket equates to a ticket tax.
Right, so if you sell a ticket within any of the perimeter, that falls under the stadium?
Under the stadium, yes.
Any other questions or comments, Jenny?
Yeah, so, you said there were 2,500 seats removed to build the Optimum?
The number I, the number I said, I believe it's around 2,000, but.
I've heard 2,500 from the.
Yep, the, yeah, so those, those seats have been physically removed.
And those seats were, in payment of lieu of taxes, we would get $2.55 per ticket sold. So, anyone, so 2,500 seats, we are no longer getting the $2.55 for 2,500 seats during games, game days.
Uh, yeah, yes.
Because you've eliminated 2,500 seats.
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Right, okay. The Optimum, you said there was a, what is it, like a club program that people buy into, or?
Yes.
Okay. So, if you're providing food for 800 people, you're providing the food? And that, that's part of the club experience?
No, it's gonna operate just like the Putnam Club. So, people will come in and they will pay for whatever food, and they want a burger, they want a pizza, whatever the offerings are down there, they will come in and pay for that separate from membership or ticket.
Okay. But you're, where you remove 2,500 seats, okay? Ordinarily, we would've gotten $2.55 per 2,500 seats. And then, if they bought something in the meals tax or bought some liquor, the town would get meals tax. So, in addition to, so, really, when you're saying that the revenue is really not gonna be made up with meals tax because when the seats were there, we got the seat fee plus the meals tax, right? Then, now, all we'll be getting is the meals tax. So, you're really not, you know.
The meals tax I was referring to is the meals tax that would be generated on non-Patriot game days. So, when we have a function in the, in that space, that's, that's new business we're bringing to the town. So.
But, but you're eliminating 2,500 seats, $2.55 per seat. That's payment in lieu of taxes. That's your, that's your tax obligation.
Well.
You're eliminating that.
The.
You are eliminating that to the town. Payment in lieu of taxes, 2,500.
The maximum capacity of the stadium.
Yes.
At a full NFL event.
Yeah, so, I said, I said yes to that.
So, my, my question is, do we have a mechanism to recoup that 2,500 times $2.55 of the, if payment in lieu of taxes, taxes that are owed to the town of Foxborough? You don't pay real estate tax. We get $2.55 per seat. We, you're eliminating 2,500 seats. That means we're eliminating, and I don't have a calculator, I had to do the math, but it's. Thank you. We're eliminating $6,250 on a game day, taxes owed to the town. So, how is that gonna be made up? And has Randy done an analysis or, has anybody done an analysis to find out how the town is gonna make up that payment in lieu of taxes?
The number actually does vary because the 2.55 actually is on special event days. And it actually goes down to, I believe, 144 for NFL days, so.
So, it doesn't make any difference. You're eliminating a payment in lieu of taxes on 2,500 seats.
So, the, the question is, the question is, so what is your question? Your question is?
My question is, the town of Foxborough is losing your payment in lieu of taxes of, whatever it is, pretending to gain, for 2,500 seats. It's in the lease that you don't pay real estate tax, you pay a payment in lieu of taxes on a seat. If you have eliminated 2,500 seats, how is the payment in lieu of taxes to be made up to the town of Foxborough?
The, and I'm not, and I'm, I'm not a lawyer who is familiar with all the inner workings of the lease between the stadium and the town. But what was contemplated in the lease and is in the lease is it says that there's a minimum amount of taxes that we have to pay. So, if we host no events in the stadium, we have to write the town a check. And, you know, from our, from our, from our building, we risk, we risk our money to bring non-football events to the stadium. That we, we work diligently and tirelessly to bring the Taylor Swifts and the Kenny Chesneys and the Monster Jams and, going back in time, the soccer matches, the, the NCAA Lacrosse Championships. And those aren't contemplated, they are contemplated in the lease because you get a higher amount for every ticket we sell on those fronts, but there's no set threshold. So, this year, we're gonna have the most concerts we've ever had in Gillette Stadium. The town tax will be the highest we've ever had. That's because, in partnership with the town, you know, we're risking our money and our efforts to host successful and profitable events. And even, it's not counted in this year, but, you know, we opened 2000 in, 2016 with the Winter Classic. So, you know, if, if, if we have no one show up at the stadium, the town gets a minimum amount of taxes. We have to exceed that threshold. And that was, was contemplated back in the 90s when the deal was struck, to protect the town. And then, any upside over that is good for the town because it's, it's good for everyone. The more business we can bring, we wanna bring business to this town. And when we bring business to this town, the, specifically the concerts, I don't know what the numbers are, but I would hazard a guess that this, this summer's concert season will bring 800,000 or 900,000 dollars to the town in town tax alone, never mind any other ancillary revenue, whether it's meals tax at Patriots Place, hotel taxes, or everything else that goes along with it, even, you know, even, you know, it's, it's different, but there, the, a lot of people in the town can, can work at those games, whether they're folks in our concession stand, whether they're police officers. So, there's economic benefit to all of that, that we risk, that we risk our money to bring these people in. And sure, is it, is it, is it good for us? Yeah, we try to, we try to be successful. But we also recognize when we're successful, it also is good for the town.
What was the capacity of the old stadium? Is it 60?
It's barely 60.
And what is it now?
68.
And what will it be after this?
Oh, I think, I think our number was 68,500, so it'll be down in the 66 range.
Still bigger than the last stadium?
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, so the, your argument is that you'll, you'll make up this decrease in seats by more events?
Well, that'll depend year to year. Because we, I mean, you know, if we had another good event to do, and we could book it, and the town buys off on the event, we would try to do another one. So, every year, we're trying to bring as many successful events as we can. You know, there's no guarantee that, you know, this, this will be our, literally, the most concerts we've ever had in one year at Gillette Stadium or Foxborough Stadium. And additionally, on the, you know, the, no, I think, I think that's about it. The more events we can bring, the better it is for both of us.
I think the, the argument that has been persuasive, persuasive to me is the fact that the stadium itself has to go through an evolution, if you will. And what it used to be simply as a football stadium is now a multi-purpose facility. And the more it becomes multi-purpose, you'll forget that they're competing against flat-screen TVs at home. The entertainment experience at home is, is great for people to stay at home in their own, in the confines of their own home, watch an open refrigerator and take something out and sit in front of their couch. What they're trying to do is to change the dynamic of the stadium so that it still becomes an experience that people will go to. And ultimately, that's what we, as a town, we as, if you will, a business partner in this case, we have to think about that because the more successful that they are, the more successful we are, ultimately. So, while I fully acknowledge your, your comment about the fact that there are less seats, if they can do more events there because of the new structure that's there, we ultimately will, will make out in the end. So, I think that's the argument you're, you're portraying. Is that accurate?
Yes. And even something as simple as that, like, we look at the Cross Pavilion and the current hotel and the future hotel, they're gonna play so well together, along with the other club on the west side. You know, so, you know, what we can't factor in because it's not our business, it's the hotel's business, but that generates, you know, anyone we can get to go into a hotel is gonna generate hotel tax for the town. They're gonna, they're gonna go out and eat at Patriot Place after their event, which will be meals tax. The meals that we serve them inside are meals tax. So, we're trying to raise the whole ship. So, if we raise the water, all ships rise. So, that's kinda the way we're looking at the projects that we're doing.
Well, I will state for the record, there is still a question in my mind about, about the membership to the club, though. And I think that's a question that still has to be answered. I think we still have to revisit that a little bit, but for tonight's discussion, it's not, it's not for tonight's discussion because it's not a 138 issue. And I think that we'll talk about, continue to talk about that further.
Okay.
What do you mean?
Well, with respect to the, the membership to the, to the Optum Lounge, there's a membership, so therefore, it's a ticket as a result. That's why I think there's still a question as to whether or not, where, do it to some revenue on that issue, but.
That's a lease issue and that's a.
That's a lease issue, it's not, it's not a 138 issue.
Jim, one last question. Because you're decreasing the, the number of seats in the stadium, the number of patrons that come to an NFL game will also decrease. So, you're really just going to spread a smaller population out into more venues?
Within the stadium?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So, in other words, when it comes to a liquor license, you're not adding any, any new, or like a, you know, 100,000 patrons on top of what you already have?
No.
The net traffic is going to decrease.
Yes. And it wasn't done for this intended purpose, but, because we just couldn't build a club without losing the seats. That's just a practical matter. But, you know, one of the silver linings to this is we're gonna have 2,500 less people coming through our gates. So, the fans coming through our gates are gonna get in quicker. We're gonna have 2,500 less people trying to use bathrooms, so the bathroom experience will be better. We average three people a car on the road. We're taking 800 cars off Route 1 on game day. So, it may not seem like much, but when we had, back in the day, we had, we had up to 4,000 standing room only that we paid the town on. That was our peak. But what we realized back then is that having 4,000 standing room only hurt the experience of our season ticket holders, particularly in the lower bowl. Because none of the standing room only people went to the 300 level. They would come and congregate in the north end zone and the bridge and behind the seats. We even had to paint red lines so that they weren't bothering the season ticket holders. So, when we ratcheted that back to 2,000, we saw the experience improve. When we ratched it back to zero, it was the best thing we did. When we ratched it back to zero, it was the best thing we did because it got the stadium back to being just better. I mean, you could walk around the concourse more easy, you could get into seats easier. Um, the wait lines were shorter everywhere. So while we certainly didn't do that to, you know, reduce the number of cars on Route One or the people coming through gates or using the bathrooms, it is a silver lining to, um, the construction project we're doing.
Now, as far as the Cross Pavilion, if there's a private function that goes on in there, someone contacts you and says, "I'd like to have a, uh, a Shriners convention in there." Or if you had a, um, a, a small event where you had tickets. Uh, does the private function, does the, uh, town get anything for that function? Um, or only from an event where you actually sell individuals' tickets?
My read of the lease agreement, not having been involved in it, um, when it was first drafted, and by the way, I don't think that the explosion that has been, uh, Foxborough Stadium was really contemplated at the time that it was done, all of the different events that are there now. For a private event or a private organizer rents the, the, the space to hold a private event, there are not traditional ticket sales. And so I don't see that falling into it. I do think, and, and I think that Jim, um, alluded to this, that there could be some ticketed events there, and it depends. Often conventions will come into town and will be at the hotel, and they will want to have a ticketed event in the space.
Yeah, the only reason I asked the question was to make the distinction.
Yes.
Okay, and thank you for the answer.
So, so if it is in fact a ticketed event, it would fall under my read of the lease. These private events would not.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just a question.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is the opti, is the Pavilion Lounge contemplated for any kind of a, say, a small music venue? A small concert-type venue? Is that contemplated for that at all?
I mean, I, currently, currently, we had, okay, so currently, we're focused on the traditional, well, we're focused on being ready for the two thousand and fifteen season. But our sales effort right now is focused on bringing the events that have been looking for that space. You know, working with, you know, the different convention bureaus and people who've been there bef, to our facility before to host, host the true, you know, what I'll call function events that we've been ha, we've been hosting successfully in the Putnam Club. Um, so we look at more as, right now, as presentations, um, you know, you know, weddings, bar mitzvahs, um, business meetings, you know. Uh, we even had, you know, one of our, um, one, a company wanted to do, uh, put cards on display in there and bring people in. So there's some creative ideas, um, but we haven't contemplated having, you know, a Jimmy Buffett concert in there for seven hundred people. Probably the wrong person, but.
Right.
Harry Connick Jr. for seven hundred people.
So what, what's your seating capacity for concerts?
Uh, it varies. Um, you know, on average, on average, it's about fifty thousand.
So a loss of twenty-five-hundred seats for a concert has no, really no impact?
It's really just a football game.
Those seats are lost anyways because that's.
Right, so it's just, all we're talking about is eight regular season football games, playoff game.
That's correct.
Yes.
Obviously preseason won't come into account.
Yeah, because one of the unique things we did, one of the unique things that we did with, when we built the building, is we had the removable seats. But one of the unique things that we did with this is that whole wall is removable. Um, and then we can build all the way up. So for a concert, we'll build the stage all the way up back to that grass line, to that glass line. You know, so on game day, people will be able to come out in all that outdoor space. But on a concert, we'll still be building the stage recessed.
Thank you. Any more comments from the board?
Um, I just had one more question. This area down here, is this, uh, the Dana Farber?
No, it is not.
Okay, what, was this where the, uh, what, what is this?
That's the Patriots' upper practice field and parking lot to that upper practice field.
This is the area that used to have its separate, um, liquor license that was given to Saga?
Nope. No, that's always, that has always been part of the stadium, uh, liquor license. The stadium itself. If you move your pen to the right, that was the, the liquor license that went to Saga.
Okay.
And then if you move to the left, that's the Dana Farber field.
That's Dana Farber.
Uh, and while this is a, an ABCC license, uh, we have attorney, our, our counsel for, uh, liquor-related applications. Dave DeLuca, do you want to address the board on the, um, your opinion on the, the application completeness?
I'm happy to do that. Uh, thank you again for, um, having me here on this issue, uh, members of the board. Uh, it is, as Bill indicated, a chapter one thirty-eight issue. Uh, you, you as a board have, uh, absolute authority to, uh, to review and to decide, based upon, uh, the public interest, the common good, uh, whether or not the requested alterations are consistent with your, your alcohol policies. So I, I've advised, uh, through Bill, uh, that you ought to take a look at, uh, these changes from a level of ten thousand feet to make sure that, uh, what we have as a licensed perimeter remains in place. And then you should also look at it from a, a height of about a hundred feet. So you have the right to, to certainly know and understand, uh, where the walls are, where the service areas are, uh, where the storage areas are, who's going to be populating those areas at what time. Uh, the third area of concern is, is, uh, your well-developed rules and regulations. Uh, they still apply here, and I would advise for the board, for the, for the applicant to be aware as well that there are some, uh, some very specific provisions of, uh, of your rules and regulations that will continue to apply here. For example, um, there's a provision that, um, uh, that, uh, that the licensee shall notify the chief of police regarding a gathering of more than four hundred patrons in one, one area, or multiple gatherings collectively amounting to more than seven hundred and fifty patrons. So that will still apply, and we've heard already some testimony about the, the numbers that might be, uh, uh, populating these different areas. Uh, there are also closing hour, uh, requirements that, that still would apply. The twenty minutes before an official closing hour, uh, the beverages would be, uh, uh, stopped, um, service at that time. Uh, and then all customers must be off the premises by fifteen minutes after the official closing hour. Uh, if there are going to be any requested changes, uh, those would have to be specific conditions. So I'd advise, uh, that there be some review of, of, uh, the alcohol regulations to see if that is even necessary. But outside of that, I, I think you've taken the proper approach. Look at it from, from a proper height, uh, then a little bit down in, and make sure all of the regulations apply.
Okay. I just had a question of Dave.
Yep.
Um, in the, um, say there was a vi, a violation, um, that warranted, say, a three-day suspension, would that apply to the entire area? Or would it just be, if there was a violation in the optimum, would it just apply to the optimum? Or would it apply because it's under one liquor license?
And we've had that question arise, uh, before. This is an extraordinarily large venue or premises, as the, as the term is defined in the law. I think, uh, it's fair to say that, uh, at, uh, an alcohol violation in any area of any premises would affect the entire premises. And I don't see that, that these areas, um, are sufficiently separate from the premises so that they would have their own identity. No, we've already heard that they are part of the same premises. They're within that same perimeter. So I think the answer to the question is yes, it would affect the entire premises. Now, is that to say that the question wouldn't be litigated at the ABCC? I'm sure it would be. Um, uh, it's a very novel issue. Uh, but my opinion is that, that one violation in one corner will affect the entire premises.
And Mr. Nolan, you're aware of that?
Uh, yes.
And with, with respect to, to counsel, as, as, um, uh, counsel who has, uh, appealed several cases to the ABCC, what I will say to that point, two things I'd like to say. One is that NPS, uh, has been a good operator and will continue to follow the rules and regulations of the town of Foxborough. And I thank Attorney DeLuca for, um, you know, itemizing some of those. There is no change in, in the operation here, and we will continue to comply with the rules and regulations. And we're not asking for any exceptions, um, to, to any of those. And, uh, notification to the police being just one example. We work so closely with, um, both chiefs that, that will continue. None of what's before you today will impact or change that interaction or the compliance with the rules and regulations. But I do think it's an interesting question and a good one, Commissioner Coppola, on the violation on such a large premises. And, and what I can say to the board is that, uh, we have been before several jurisdictions where there are hotels, um, large hotel operations, where, uh, while some of these spaces are not separate and distinct, some of the, the club areas, let's say, in one of these club areas, the, the Cross Pavilion or, or the Putnam, um, there were a violation. It would certainly be, um, at the board's discretion, and we've seen other boards in larger hotel operations say, "There was a service issue here, but we don't want to cripple, um, you know, in the case of a hotel impacting an entire city. We don't want to cripple the whole operation because technically the board could shut down the hotel as an inholder license." So, uh, we have seen boards, um, such as yourselves be very practical in the application of, uh, those situations where there are violations impacting large properties such as this one.
Right, but there is the danger that if there was an egregious, egregious violation.
Of course, of course. And the board, of course, would vote as it sees fit, and the applicant would then determine whether or not an appeal would be necessary or appropriate. But of course, it is always at the board's discretion how it determines appropriate to deal with such a violation.
Any more questions for Mr. DeLuca? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Uh, if there's no more questions from the board, where this is a public hearing, I'd like to open up to the public if there's any input. Seeing none, anybody? So we would entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and then we'll deliberate and vote on it.
To make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion on closing it? All those in favor? All right. Motion carries five to zero. Under deliberation.
Dave, you said that we should take a look at it from ten thousand feet and then work our way down to the, um, details. Uh, do you suggest that we, as a board, uh, take some time to study this, or is this something that, uh?
It, it's really at your, at your discretion. I know the applicant's provided a good deal of information and certainly vetted a lot of what you have with, uh, the public safety, uh, agencies, the building department and the like. Uh, they were available for, for your purposes, uh, tonight, I believe. Um, if there's something specific, uh, that needs to be reviewed, then sure, you can take whatever time is required, uh, to, uh, to make a considered decision in this.
Now, and the reason I ask that is, do you see anything that, that we may have overlooked?
I feel comfortable that you've, you've gotten, you, you've got that, that opportunity to see it from the highest level and also see it from the lowest level, uh, in order to make a judgment whether or not what's proposed here, the alteration, is, uh, in the public interest and the public good.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
Yep.
No more discussion with the board?
With these additional two to three spots, you're going to run it business as usual as you do every day now, game day, or whether there's a wedding going on in the, um, the suites now? So nothing is going to change?
No change.
Okay.
Same training for all of that staff, which I know Jim, um, spoke early on, but is of course so important, um, the training of staff. Everything will continue to operate to the same standards as it does today.
And then just to bring me up to speed, maybe the board can help me. Does, has there ever been a violation, a liquor violation?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, philosophy.
Yeah, there was a, uh, someone that's, a kid, someone that served a kid and another patron reported him and brought it forward. In the stands.
In the stands.
It was a year or two years ago.
But that's, I mean, that's, then, that's the only violation in the history of Gillette Stadium. Um, and I don't know how far previous it goes back prior to then.
Okay, I'm good.
Oh, I just, oh.
Go ahead, Jane, sure.
No, I, we had, um, we had, I guess it was the ancient marina came before us. They were going to do, um, they were going to be doing some alterations to their, and they actually came before us, before they started the, um, the work. Uh, we had another fusion that did the work, and then we kind of suspended their license, but I think that was for a different reason. Anyway, what's the, what's the, um, what's the protocol in regard to alteration of premises? At what point did they come before the selection?
Yeah, and I, I understand that to be a, um, uh, a, a bit of an ambiguity. Uh, and, and it also relates to the, one of the general provisions of your alcohol regulations indicate that it, that a change in the description of the license plan premises requires approval prior to permitting. This is a little bit different. Uh, as counsel indicated earlier, it would be appropriate, for example, if there was going to be an expansion of the perimeter that was requested. Typically, it would be a licensed premises that was looking to expand into a parking lot, looking to add a deck, looking to add a patio that was not otherwise within the perimeter of the licensed premises. That's my read on the regulation and the application here. In this instance, um, uh, the, I know the request for the building came in before the, the hearing here on, on, on alteration. What, what is critical, however, is the understanding that, um, there will be no certificate of occupancy issued until after, you know, review and approval of the alteration. So to some extent, uh, they proceed at their own risk, uh, insofar as, uh, as, as engaging in all of the building that's required, obviously, in order to run up to this. So, uh, I don't see the regulation, which you might think otherwise applies, in this situation since the permit has remained the same.
Okay. And, and just one more question.
Sure.
Um, Bill, your concern about the club, the eight hundred club and, and the fees and taxes and, and all that, that's a completely separate issue from this.
Yes.
Which you will be discussing at a.
An allotted date.
Lit, with Randy and, and all that.
Yes, that's right.
Any more discussion amongst ourselves on the board? Someone would like to make a motion on the, um, request?
Make a motion that we approve the application to alter the premises of the all annual alcoholic beverage license for NPS LLC doing business as Gillette Stadium.
Motion made, anyone second?
I'll second.
Motion made second for the discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise a hand. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Running a little bit behind, so we had already opened up the seven twenty-five hearing for Splitsville Howl at the Moon. Is there a applicant for that? Thank you. And you were here when the, the hearing advertisement was read?
Uh, I want to say I got here probably, no, you probably had already started at about seven, over before, seven o'clock.
So just for the record, we.
Before seven o'clock?
What's that? Like, right at seven, I walked in.
Oh, so you heard it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so for the record, if you could just introduce yourself and.
Yeah, for the record, I'm Dan Glaberson, uh, manager of record, GM of, uh, Howl at the Moon in Splitsville.
So we have the application in front of us. You want to give a presentation of what it's about?
I didn't, I didn't bring any posters or anything like that, but, um, obviously, we are looking to amend our entertainment license, um, strictly on, uh, Thursdays for, um, from an eight o'clock start to a six o'clock start, um, in an effort to capture some of the walking around and comings that people are doing in Patriot Place in that six o'clock hour versus eight o'clock and later. Found that it's, it's fairly tough to get people to come out on a Thursday night that late. Um, so we're looking to start a little bit earlier in hopes of grabbing them while they're leaving Gillette Stadium, leaving Waste Management or any of the places around there, or just walking around.
From eight o'clock, from eight o'clock down to six o'clock?
Down to six o'clock, yeah.
That's just, just on Thursday nights?
Uh, that's the only day we're asking for today, yeah, basically. Friday and Saturdays, we found that eight o'clock, people are looking to go out Friday, Saturday night, eight o'clock. I mean, I, that's a separate issue, I guess you'd say.
So before the board asks questions, is there an update or, uh, input from your findings?
Well, well, just, um, for the record, um, we've actually had a pretty good, uh, first year of operation.
Yeah, I mean, it's crazy how fast it goes.
It's actually, it's done very well. Um, as the, the chief has noted, that, uh, the operation has been pretty smooth. Um, I understand the request. I think the request does make sense, given that the nature of the business that occurs there. Um, and so I think Thursday night, they have any earlier date, and also that could coincide with a Thursday night game as well. Uh, though that is a special event, which would actually would be, is already in the license. So, um, but I do understand the request, and I, I think it's, uh, it's, uh, it should, it's, it can be supported from our end.
Appreciate that.
And I'm sorry, Chief O'Leary, similar response? Have you? I'm sorry. I have. I have to ask, and you're on the far side of the room.
You've got a wireless mic, yeah.
Since opening of Splitsville last August, we found that the management team in place is very receptive to suggestions that either myself or my staff have made on a night-by-night basis. Their operation in terms of public safety has improved each additional month, as the staff has got to learn a little bit more about Massachusetts laws and regulations, and especially where a lot of the team came from other parts of the country. And I felt that this change in hours, in particular on a Thursday night, doesn't present any challenges or safety issues for our community.
Okay, thank you. And Attorney DeLuca, I know it's not a formal application for change, but do you have any input?
Only that there is a very detailed license that was issued in connection with this request, and that Thursday, Friday, and Saturday were the licensed days, but in addition, they are also licensed on what's called a stadium event day. So, there is the possibility of their operation continuing on other than a Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, depending upon the stadium schedule. This affects only Thursdays, this request, irrespective of other event days.
Okay, thank you. Open up to the board for questions, comments?
Dan, you, I don't think you were around when we first discussed this, but when we were going through the process of determining what was appropriate for the community, this was originally billed as a bowling alley that was family-friendly, had a great menu, you know, a lot of kids going there. And then, at an appropriate hour, it would turn into a nightclub, which is the, was actually, it was supposed to be Howl at the Moon entertainers, and I don't recall there actually being a Howl at the Moon club, but it's morphed into that. But the thing is, the reason that eight o'clock was chosen was because that was the time when nightclubs would really fire up, and that, you know, the families would have had dinner and gone home. So, are you saying that you're, and we had a long discussion on how do you ask the kids to leave? Are you saying that, you know, if you move that up, you're going to ask the kids to leave, or ask the families to leave at that hour?
I mean, dependent on, obviously, on our license, I think we are required to, if the show starts, be 21 and up, if I'm not mistaken. So, in that effort on Thursdays, I would love to allow the families, obviously, so I'm not 100% sure, I guess you'd say, if I could say no, I'd say no. I don't know if that's, is that an option?
No, but we went through this, that was part of the transition from Splitsville Lanes to the nightclub entertainment.
And I don't think we're asking, we're not, you know, with the show starting, I think we're looking at it more as a live entertainment aspect to accompany our building at six o'clock. We're not looking for, you know, we're not going to the nightclub aspect of it, it's more of having some, having live entertainment ability for people walking by with the garage door open, they can hear it and come in and listen to it or whatnot, not, you know, I don't want to say they're not more, it's not going to be a nightclub scene at six o'clock in the afternoon on a Thursday, and I think we understand that, if that makes sense.
Well, that's part of my question, what is it going to be if it's, if you're saying that you'd like to start up Howl at the Moon at six?
It's still the same entertainers, they're just, generally, it'll be more of, I don't want to say a tamer show, but they'll play more of, you know, 70s, 80s song requests, stuff people want to hear. They're not going to, you know, you're not going to have them playing any rap, or, I don't want to say not any rap, but they're not going to play things that you typically wouldn't hear at six o'clock in the afternoon versus, versus easy listening, rock music stuff you'd hear on the radio any day, at any time during the day, if that makes sense.
Thanks.
All set? Anyone else on the board?
Is the intent to still allow the bowling to go on?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Up until eight o'clock?
Yeah.
For minors?
Yeah, I would love to allow, I'll take minors all day, and I, obviously, at some point, you have to make a distinction, but...
Yeah, the two, the two bloods don't mix, and that's the rub we had the last time.
Yeah, and I wasn't here for the initial rubs.
I know, I know.
It was enjoyable.
I watched it on TV a couple times.
But according to the license, once the entertainment starts at eight o'clock, then it becomes a different, the whole scene is different, it becomes 20, you know, you have to be 21 and all that.
Twenty-one.
And the whole, the whole idea of, when we've allowed the licensing of Splitsville, Howl at the Moon was just a portion, a portion of it. This seems like on Thursdays, you want the tail to egg the dog. It's the entertainment license, you agreed that it would be Thursday, Friday, Saturday at eight o'clock, and that was what was, I mean, it was pushed that it was, the Splitsville was the family entertainment, and then at eight o'clock on Thursdays, Friday, and Saturday, the Howl at the Moon would, let's face it, predominate. So, I'm not comfortable with changing that, because what you had agreed to was Thursday, Friday, Saturday, having the live entertainment at Howl at the Moon, the other, the other times, it would be Splitsville, the family bowling area, venue.
I mean, I think if you look at our overall weekly hours, I mean, I think we're still the family bowling alley with great food and entertainment. We, you know, when summer comes up, when school lets out, we'll open at 11 every day of the week. You know, right now, we open at four, just because kids are in school, and we'll open at 11. So, I think, you know, the additional two extra hours, I don't think when you're, when you're only, when you're open from 11 to 12 or 1, seven days a week, I don't think that's turning the concept on Thursdays, the tail's not wagging it when you're still, you're still operating the same family, family bowling alley, just one night of the week, it's starting two hours earlier, if that makes sense.
Well, no, it means at six o'clock, you turn it into the nightclub area, you know, instead of eight o'clock. Because what you would have to do is start the eight o'clock type activity at six, which means the way you do business in there changes. It's under, it has to be over 21, so...
I mean, I wouldn't look at those two hours as changing the whole, the whole operation. I would look at it as, we are changing Thursdays, but I think Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday, Sunday, Friday are operating the same way.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at the schedules, and the closest schedule I could see matching up Patriot Place would be, I believe it was St. Louis, and they, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I think it was St. Louis.
You're talking about Howl, corporate Howl at the Moons?
Right, right. It was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you know, subject to schedule, or wasn't open. And then, the other nights was seven, it started at seven, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
I honestly, I couldn't tell you the operating hours for the other corporate Howl at the Moons throughout the country.
I looked at all those today, too, and they all vary dramatically.
Yeah, I think it depends on the environment.
Some are four o'clock, some are five, some are six, some are seven, and it looks like it's the Thursday that kind of hinges, you know, changes more than the other ones too, so...
Right, but the thing is, the licensing authorities, and we are the licensing authority, and what we had, what we had agreed to, and what Splitsville had agreed to, was a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, eight o'clock, not six o'clock on Thursdays, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, eight o'clock. There was a lot of discussion about this, there was a lot of concern, a lot of time put in, put into this, and this was the entertainment license agreement that was acceptable to both the board selectmen and Splitsville.
And I think that's why I'm here today, to ask you to amend it to six o'clock.
Now, you have the ability to close, I think, the last four lanes that are over by the entertainment center, so you can actually isolate for those, those two hours where you have...
Yeah, you could fully curtain them off, you couldn't even tell they were there, essentially.
You can close those lanes at six o'clock and still keep the other lanes open, and kind of segregate the crowd for the first two hours on Thursday.
Absolutely, I mean, it's all, it's all divided up, you could go the other way in lanes one through four, you could put anybody who's under 21 up there as well, and you honestly wouldn't even know the entertainment was going on down there unless you were watching the TV or, or listening to the music. I mean, there's different ways to go about it as well, to get them, minors will be nowhere near the actual stage or the entertainment or the center bar there.
Is this entertainment license amenable? Can we amend it for hours, or does a whole new process, new license have to go?
Fredrick Castle, now?
It's not unusual at all to amend or change or modify any license. It's not necessary that you revisit the license from the beginning, but you can make changes based upon experience, that is, the history that we have so far, based upon the requests, keeping in mind always that your job as licensing authority is, again, the public good, and what acts in the public convenience, you know, and in that case, it's your public safety that are paramount concern.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else on the board? Where's the public hearing? Anyone from the audience want to make a comment, a question?
Lindoal, Seapond Ave, so we were all here for the long run-out Splitsville thing, and I believe we're going to invite them in and have them give an update on how things are going and stuff, I don't believe that ever happened, but I think they're asking for, they're not expanding their liquor, they're not saying they want crazy drinks, they just want entertainment two hours earlier, so I've been up there several times, I've actually won one of the parties that, you know, we can bring all our friends to, and the party itself has to start a little bit later, and I get out early, and I'd rather go to a party earlier on a Thursday night than I would at eight o'clock, because most of you know I'm in bed by nine, so. So, I support the two hours additional for a Thursday night.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Any more questions from the board? So, once we close this hearing, the back and forth with the applicant would have to stop, just because you can't get any new information, we're going to have to talk amongst ourselves, so. Any other questions for the applicant before we close the hearing? A motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Discussion?
I think with Chief saying that, you know, everything's been fine up there, I'm fine with it. Like I said, I checked, like Ginny did, I looked at all of their locations, and all their hours are different, and it seemed like Thursday was the one that they all kind of juggled, there was no real rhyme or reason. If you had to do an average, the average starting time of all of the Howl at the Moons are 6:30, so I'm fine with giving it a shot.
No, I think, I think most of the schedules, there was only, most of them were consistent, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, started at the same time, lots of them started at seven. There wasn't, I don't remember any, like, Thursday being different from...
I thought I saw a few, but I might have been wrong, but I did see that some of them started at four o'clock, some at five, six, seven.
Yeah, and those are the ones, like, down in Orlando, which is, you know, that's potty time 24 hours a day, so I could understand that opening, you know, having four o'clock opening there, I can understand that, but...
One of the things I heard, I heard that was interesting, was the fact that if they can actually segregate those four lanes and keep that away from the, under 21s, or the over 21s, rather, that actually sounded like a good compromise in terms of how to address the, address your concern, as well as, you know, trying to address the concern that they had.
We talked about that before, Bill, and the segregation actually was supposed to be, you know, a noticeable partition, and it's a curtain on one side, and that's it. You know, the segregation, physical segregation, I don't think is possible right now.
I went there and there was no segregation.
Well, there actually is, there's an actual rail, railing there, that actually is, is actually, that does separate the areas.
But that was not what was agreed to, there was supposed to be an actual, like, a curtain or something.
Well, there is a curtain there.
But when I, when I was there, there was, there was no, the curtain wasn't, there was no separation.
What time, was there a...
It was in the evening.
And the van was going, and the...
Yep, no. I can't tell you when I...
So, if it was after, if it was after eight o'clock, the curtain would be, be open anyway, on a Thursday night? Yeah, because, because all the under 21s are out.
Right.
Right. That's always my question, they're still doing that, as far as any under 21s have to leave before eight o'clock, such that the Howl at the Moon can kick off with their normal routine.
Right. So, I mean, there is a compromise of sectioning off the lanes, but there's also, I mean, we have the choice of saying no, yes, or maybe there's a compromise going from eight o'clock to six o'clock, which may be too early, but is there a consideration from eight o'clock to, yep, to go from eight o'clock to seven o'clock, give the families a little more time, the dinner crowd a little more time, and then, it's a little closer to eight. But I also sat through those hearings, and it was very detailed, and we spent a lot of time and attorney fees and back and forth with that, and it's kind of quick to come back and say, well, all that stuff aside, can we go two hours earlier?
I'm with you on that one.
It would have been nice to find out a year ago, but I understand, we don't know until the business is running if it's a success or a disaster, or somewhere in between. I haven't heard of problems there, but it's a little too early to say, let's amend it when we spend so much time and effort on the first one.
And this, this final conditions on the license was compromised, I mean, we did put a lot of work into this.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one question? Now, I'm probably out of the point of order.
Well, once again, I'll just, let us finish a little more discussion?
I'd like to, I just would like you to talk, yes.
Is the hearing closed?
Public hearing is closed, yeah. More discussion?
I think, you know, when a business comes to us and says that there's something that we can do to help them out, to help generate more business, and they're willing to take steps, we should support that. Even if it's on a trial basis, I think we have the, we have the input from the chief, who sees no issue with it, I don't see why we should take the chief's comments and basically ignore them. I think we should, we should take that under advisement and, you know, help, help the local business out and try and attract more business, which in the end, will actually benefit the town, so...
Well, Dave, you weren't on the board when we had these very detailed, long, drawn-out discussions, and this was, like I said, this was the compromise that was, that was reached, that was palatable to the selectmen and Splitsville.
You're right, Jenny, I wasn't on the board at that time, but I'm on the board now. So, they've been a good business, they haven't had any issues, I think we should help support them.
You know, I kind of agree with, with Dave, I wasn't on the board either, and I respect all that you guys went through, but they've been open for a year, chief has said they've got a perfect track record, no incidences, each month they get better and better, and it's a, it's a business in Foxborough, and if the business wants to try to tweak things a little bit to improve business, I think we have to say yes to them.
But this was the, this was the Splitsville, and what this is doing is it's opening up for a couple of extra hours, the secondary bar area, the Howl at the Moon. That was not, the license was not given to Howl at the Moon, the license was given to Splitsville, which is a restaurant with a bowling theme, that also serves food and alcohol.
This is an entertainment license for Howl's entertainment hours.
Right.
So, that's what we're, have in front of us.
Bill, the other clubs that are up there that have entertainment, do they all begin at eight?
Generally speaking, that's true. Is that true, Chief, or is that...
The reason I ask is that the, could this possibly set precedent where all the other clubs want to begin earlier?
Every single facility that is there has a different business strategy. For example, Toby Keith, when they have live entertainment... For example, Toby Keith, when they have live entertainment...
I'm sorry.
Might want to sit in the front row next time.
And, and just before you say, I, I'll never shut someone off from speaking, but the audience, the pu, the public hearing was closed, so I just can't have you bring new information in, that's all.
I got it.
With regard, every, every business has a different business strategy. And, for example, Toby Keith doesn't have live entertainment until nine thirty. Bar Louie will have a disc jockey starting at a later time. So, it, it's variable. I don't perceive that bringing the hours earlier hurts general public safety in the area. And if they were coming in and saying, boy, we wanna start the entertainment at nine and finish at one on, let's say, a Saturday night or a Friday night, that might pose a different challenge.
You mean, so it started at nine and then finished an hour later?
Yeah, right, at one o'clock. That would be a different challenge. You know, to change the hours so that they're finishing earlier makes more sense from my perspective of providing policing services.
So, you're suggesting that if we change it to six, we curtail it two hours earlier?
Well, because it's ending at ten o'clock at night.
I don't think that's what the request is.
He's not, he's asking to extend Thursdays by two hours.
At the beginning.
Until closing.
And, and the closing is gonna remain the same.
I, I think...
Yeah, if it's, if it's for clarification, if it's not new information, but yeah, I think the question is, the letter that you sent, Dan, was, can, can you open from six o'clock rather than eight o'clock, but the closing hours stay the same?
The, the physical closing hours, yes. The actual time the show, the entertainment would end would most likely, I don't think it'd be two hours approximately, it'd be realistically about eleven thirty or one minute. So, it's about thirty minutes earlier.
Okay, so that, that's a little bit of a conundrum, cause it's, it's not in the request. But we, we could make the motion and, and make it a condition. So, what, what, uh, Mr. Glaberson is saying is begin two hours earlier and then at the tail end of it, uh, finish the entertainment earlier by, are you saying a half an hour or an hour?
Right now, they end at twelve thirty, so it'd most likely be ending at twelve.
But, but as a business model, you're, you're asking to start early to get the early business. So, why would the people who are there, why wouldn't they expect entertainment to be until twelve thirty, the regular time? You want to open early to accommodate some people who come early. But the people who are expecting the same entertainment Friday and Saturday at the same time, why would you, why would they expect to be entertainment closing down early? They wouldn't. And as a business model, you wouldn't do that either, because you would have, the people are in there, you're gonna keep them in there as long as they can. You're just asking to open early, so...
Yeah, it's, uh, the public hearing is closed unless we wanna open it up to go back and forth with dialogue. We can't be asking the applicant questions after it's closed.
Okay, so don't.
I, I don't mind extending this discussion if you wanna open up the hearing again.
No.
So, Chairman, it was, it was our understanding from a staff perspective that this was a six to ten license period. And I, I, the fact that it's being asked to go to twelve tonight was something that I wasn't unaware of, so I have to admit, openly admit that. We thought it was a six to ten, six to ten license.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't hear the applicant saying they wanna go from ten to twelve. I think he's saying it's already twelve thirty-one and they can bring it back. This request is only to bring it two hours. Whatever the existing license is, is what it is. And you think the license only goes till ten at night?
No, I thought, I was on the impression it was gonna go from six to ten. But when, when he further explained it though, that it actually goes to twelve thirty.
To closing.
It's, it's actually eight to, it's actually eight to twelve thirty, which is really a four and a half hour license, entertainment license.
But, but you thought they were gonna move it all forward?
Yes, I thought they were gonna move it all forward, that was my understanding, so if I'm, if I'm mistaken...
That was my understanding.
Was there a, um, was there an email that was sent or something on this saying they wanted to bring it ear, the, the end time closer? I thought I remember seeing it, but it's not in this letter.
We had a conversation with Dan on this.
I didn't see it.
And I, yeah, if, if I, if that was a misunderstanding, I apologize, but that's the, we collectively had that understanding.
So, if I can make this suggestion, cause there's a lot of uncertainty on the hours right now and where we specifically did ask for Splitsville Howl at the Moon to come back, once they've been running, to let us know how it's going. I think I'd, my opinion would be, we table this till they come in, give us a presentation, we have all the facts, before we make a hasty decision on this. That's what I, cause if, if the chief is thinking one thing, if you're thinking another thing and the hearing's closed right now, either we reopen this hearing to discuss it, which I don't mind doing, or we continue it till we have a presentation of what the facts are.
In this case, I think we're both on the same, the chief and I are on the same page on what we understood.
Can we put it on, put it on the next agenda?
Yeah, if...
Makes sense?
We can clear it up, we can, we can clear it up. And I think it'd be better to do that.
I think would the, if that's the case, would they have to repost, uh, this public hearing? If there's a material change?
Continue, continue the hearing.
I think you can, you can, as you would any, as you would any public hearing, uh, you can continue it based on, uh...
And we can, and there can be modifications to it along the way?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
We'll try and clear that up for you for next meeting.
Okay. So, what we did is we closed the hearing, so I think we need to reopen the hearing and then continue it for another two weeks.
Well, you did, did open...
Closed it, so you do need to reopen it if you're gonna do that by motion invoked.
I make a motion that we reopen the public hearing?
Motion made and seconded?
Seconded.
Motion seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor of opening the hearing again? Motion carries five zero. Do I have a motion to continue the hearing to a later date?
I will make...
Yeah, continue or extend it?
I will make a motion to extend the public hearing to our next board's elections, which would be a date certain of June...
Well, that, that's provided that Splitsville is prepared to come in and give an update. I guess we have to check with them to see if that date's available for them.
Why don't we say thirty days? Give it that way?
Within thirty days.
Within thirty days.
Well, you usually have to give a specific date.
You can always reopen it on the date that you state tonight and continue it again if they're not available to come back.
I would recommend that you do June ninth if, if they're ready. I think they're anxious to try and, to address their crowd that's coming in, starting for the summer, I'm assuming. So, therefore, I think they'd, they prefer to get it done sooner rather than later.
June ninth. I make a motion, we continue this public hearing till the June ninth board's elections meeting?
And we'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor of continuing to June ninth? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Dan.
Great, thanks, Dan.
All right, next on the agenda, we've got, um, beautiful, discuss the trash program with Town Manager Bill Keegan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Town Council has stayed because, um, the firm has been working with, um, the, uh, company of A.J. Dooley to actually work on a new contract that they've been working on with, um, with the contract, with Mr. Dooley and his, and his company and with his council. Over the past several months, we've been working with, uh, Mr. Dooley and Russell Disposal, who has, who actually has contract with several residents in town to, to actually collect all the trash and recycling. If you can just come up, A.J., if you wouldn't just, I don't know if, certainly you can have input if you'd like, with the board's permission, of course. But the, the situation has evolved where, um, Mr. Dooley has actually entered into an agreement with, or in the final, final stages, stages of an agreement with Dooley, Dooley, with Russell Disposal to, to acquire all their customers. So, effectively, we'll have one major trash company in town doing all these, the residential collection and recycling. The, the goal is to have this in place by July one. Uh, we're still working on the final, finalizing that agreement. And we're also anxious to try and get to a point where we can actually close on all the, the details between Russell and, um, and Dooley to try and get all those pieces figured out. Uh, we're very close, I think we, probably within the next few days, we should have it worked out. But this was actually a two-phase discussion. Tonight was, was to certainly let everybody know that this is coming and, uh, the goal is to have it in place by July one. So, we're very grateful and fortunate that this has all been worked out in, in the way that it has. It's, um, I'm pleased to see that it's, it's come, come to fruition the way it has. Uh, one of the things that we discussed even prior to the contract though, was the fact that there is no waste hauling regulation in the town. And as such, uh, I've been working with, um, with the, with the, the Director of Public Health, the, uh, Town Engineer, Public Works Director, Mary Beth, and, um, and with, um, D, a DEP consultant, Kathy Merzer, who is actually the expert, if you will, and goes around the state and works on these types of regulations, who actually agreed to work with us and provided some guidance on how to develop such a regulation. So, I've given you a draft regulation this evening, that's, that's been a culmination of a lot of work over the past several months. The, the purpose of the regulation is to actually provide a, a certain level of protection for the public safe, for, for the community and also to, to establish some clear guidelines for any person who, who hi, who's, who gets a permit to haul trash or recycling through and within our community. So, um, we're working through those, those pieces. I actually did solicit, uh, the input of, of Mr. Dooley and his company to, uh, to see if, if they had any thoughts about the regulation as we proposed it. His, um, his, a number of his ideas were actually incorporated into the regulation, so, uh, his help, his thoughts were actually well ta, well taken and well pointed out. So, what we have is a, is a collaborative process that we've evolved to, which, which is culminated in, in this document we have before you tonight. I'm not asking the board to approve this tonight, I just wanted you to review it. And then if you have comments on it, we can actually probably finalize it on the ninth, uh, at the next meeting. But, um, I just want to say that it's been a, a very good process. I'm, I'm appreciative of the work that Mr. Dooley has done, the work that Town Council has done in trying to work out the detail. This is kind of an interesting process, because effectively, we do not, we're not buying anything from Dooley or, uh, our trash company, our trac, contractors going forward. They're providing a service to the residents of the town. They're gonna continue to collect, um, uh, trash and recyclables from, from residents through a contract that's made directly through Dooley, uh, Dooley colle, Dooley, Dooley, the Dooley companies. And as such, uh, that arrangement's not gonna change. The one thing that's important for the residents to know is that Mr. Dooley has agreed to continue to doing the service that even that Russell was proposing, uh, and has been doing right along. Obviously, I think at one point, his model will try to evolve into the model he's used to doing. But I think for the time being, so that it becomes seamless to the residents, that the process will continue to be as they, as they've seen right along. So, without, with your permission, I'd like to ask Mr. Dooley to comment and his associate to talk a little bit further about this tonight.
Okay, so, obviously, I'm A.J. Dooley from Dooley Disposal, this is my partner, Anthony Spitalary. Uh, Anthony's been with, uh, Dooley for two years now, a little over two years. And, um, so he's been involved with this, uh, from the beginning. And, um, you know, as, uh, Mr. Keegan said, um, you know, it's been a good process going through and we're getting towards the, uh, final stages of it. And, uh, we look forward to, um, you know, being the, uh, the only real vendor in the town doing the, doing the trash for the residents. Not the only one, but the majority holder, I would say.
Large majority.
Large majority. If there's any questions, um, feel free...
Questions from the board?
Uh, A.J., how does this, how's this helped you grow your business?
Well, I would say over the last three years, it's been quite an interesting, unique situation. Um, you know, I went out and, and really worked my tail off and fought to get the, just over twenty-two hundred customers that we have right now. Uh, we base it off of that there's about forty-two, forty-two hundred homes that could've been out there. And, you know, we worked our butt off and we, we got over the half percent and, um, you know, getting the rest, it, it will, it will help. I mean, um, you know, there's a reason why companies going, I mean, why towns offer municipal contracts, because, you know, if you're picking up every single house, then there's more profits there, there's more, you can give a better price. There's a lot of things that go on to it with that. And, um, you know, us getting to that point i- is important for the town and it, it's important for us. So, it will help dra, it will help. But, uh, it's been a, it's been a long battle. Thanks.
So, Chairman, I just, uh, I think one, one important thing to note is that, um, that as being a relatively new company in this business, trash business is a very difficult business and it's, it's very competitive business. One of the things that does provide, does offer to Mr. Dooley and his company is the fact that he can now say he actually collects for an entire community, which is something that he does in portions in some other towns. So, now he can actually compete for contracts in other communities as well, where he hasn't had that experience fully in...
So, we have not had municipal experience, but I've been in this my whole life and we're fourth generation, but, um, so I've been, I've literally owned and operated Dooley Disposal for seventeen years. I know I look real young, but, uh, so we've been at this for quite a while, but, um, yeah, I mean, now, you know, we will have the municipal experience, um, going forward. You know, when we go to another town, we ha, we can put that, we can check that box. And, um, you know, I'd like to think that was the only thing that kept me from getting it the first time here and now, uh, now we can check that box.
But, A.J., you're okay working without a contract. You've, you've gained the confidence of your customers, such that there's, you're, you're going to be the biggest game in town, so, um...
Yeah.
Is that how you're gonna operate?
With, is that how we're gonna operate still? Yeah, I mean...
Well, we will have a contract with him, but, but...
For the town collection?
But for town collection only, really, primarily, I mean, there, there will be guidelines, of course, as far as...
But it's still, it's still a house by house.
It's a house by house. If you're not happy with me, you can leave. So, I mean, my, nothing changes as far as the way that we're gonna operate. Every customer is important to us, there's not, you know, there's no phone call that we don't get back to, no email that we don't get back to. I mean, we're only as good as the residents in the town of Foxborough. Every phone call, every email matters to us, every customer matters to us. And that, nothing's gonna change there. You know, we're gonna add more customers, it's gonna be, um, you know, we're gonna have to work harder. But other than that, it's the same old thing.
Well, I mean, in that respect, I think it's, it's, it's healthy for the consumer, it's good for you. I think it's a good relationship.
I think this is a win-win and that's, you know, it's a win-win.
Uh, I've got a couple of different questions, some on the rules and regs and then some on the trash. On the trash end of it, with Russell's customers, you made an agreement with him, so you're basically buying out his trash side of the Foxborough business?
We're still working on it, but I mean, so I really don't wanna get into it too much.
That's fine.
Because, I mean, it, you know, we're, we're not completely there yet, we gotta finish this, but that is correct.
And then on the... Trash and recycling.
Trash and recycle. Then on the town side, we will have a, a contract with A.J.?
Yes.
We will basically take over Russell's obligation to fulfill the, the municipality's service in those.
Then, a couple of questions on these regulations. I know from doing work in other towns, dumpster areas like at an apartment building or a school, I noticed, you know, they have to be screened. A lot of other communities, they have to be on a cement slab and I don't see that in here. Is that something that, is that a, a state regulation, I'm wondering?
You know, I would think that that's something that it would be on, it certainly wouldn't be on us, that we would have to put the concrete slab in.
No, 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 whoever the entity is, can you just ask Bill Casper on that one?
I'll speak to Bill about that, but it may be a, a local building department.
I know Walpole, we did a lot of work on Walpole and we, they had to have cement, the dumpsters had to be on a cement pad. Not the, you know, roll-off ones if you're, you know, cleaning out Jim's basement or whatever, but, you know, weekly, um, dumpsters like either at the schools, and I know most of the schools are.
And they are.
Or apartment buildings or stuff like that, so, um, and I think, um, the permitting now, anybody that comes through town, do they have to have a, a trash permit now?
Anybody who, um, who, who actually does business in town has to have a permit through the Board of Health.
Actually, they have to have a permit if they're transporting trash from Norwood to Plainville. They have to register.
And they, everybody does those permits now and who polices that?
Uh, the Board of Health, Board of Health. They're the ones, they're the permit issuing authority based on the, uh, the public health piece of it. But the, uh, and that's not gonna change, but we're gonna, as far as everything else, that's gonna be handled through our office in Public Works.
Okay, so the permitting is already in place, so it's not anything?
That part of it is not, not changed.
All right, that's all.
Dave, Ginny?
Yeah, so, the people watching at home, okay. What will happen is there'll be a town contract for municipal trash?
Yes.
But also, you will be absorbing the, uh, Russell customers? So, it would be A.J. Dooley will be absorbing the Russell customers, right? But that doesn't mean that if your favorite trash pickup is waste management and you live in town, as long as waste management is permitted for the town of Foxborough, waste management can still pick up your trash.
Absolutely, that's correct.
It's just the majority of the households will be using the A.J. Dooley slash Russell.
Yeah, just going off of statistics of that we have, you know, between the two of us... of us, we hold the majority of the town. We have the majority of the town.
Yeah. And if this starts in July first, if anyone has been hoarding Russell bags, will you still honor the Russell trash bags?
I would think that hopefully this whole, this, all of this gets sealed up and, you know, everything gets taken care of in the next couple of days, as far as the deal that we're working on. And they will have, you know, in that case, they'd have three to four weeks of notice that we will give publication everywhere, letting people know of the change.
Okay, so, so don't buy Russell trash bags?
I wouldn't.
I'm just wondering because.
I can't say, I definitely can't say that.
We have an existing contract right now with Russell, so.
Yeah.
Let's take that back.
Right, so.
So, but.
Ask me that question next week, and I might be able to answer you right now.
No, last time, when we changed, we had to actually turn in the other, the old trash bag, the yellow one.
I think that was by choice.
And the town was the one that.
The town was the one who was getting all the money for that.
Right, yeah.
At the time, whereas now, the town's not getting that money for the stickers.
Right. So were you, what I'm saying is, were you wanted the, if, you know, for the, excuse me? Well, if you've dealt with, if you've worked out a contract, could that be something that you work out with Russell?
Yeah, so, my name's Anthony, good to meet you. What's going to happen is there'll be a definitive date on when we transition this. Right now, it's July first, and when that happens, the color of the sticker is going to change, okay? And the hope is that, the hope is that in the next week, this is all hashed out, and like A.J. said, we're able to get a letter out that gives the consumer, the customer, a four weeks' notice. What I would say is that we have discussed with our council the opportunity to possibly have a grace period whereby if somebody has been hoarding a Russell sticker, we will allow them to redeem that. But that, that is not completely hashed out, but that is on the table, and it's a talking point right now.
Because we would be eating that cost.
Right.
You know.
We would be eating the cost unless, you know, we negotiated with Russell some kind of inventory and some kind of holdback.
Right.
So, it's on the table, it's being talked about, but it hasn't been nailed down right now.
Okay, that's all I'm asking you, is if you can discuss it and try to work something out.
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
And just one final comment, and A.J.'s one of my, well, I'm your customer, and I've seen you doing tremendous work for three years with the cleanup day and every dumpster you've donated, but I've gotta ask the question, are we going in a direction that could be a monopoly, so five years from now, A.J. turns into bad A.J. and we're stuck with a monopoly? I think it's a fair question.
It's a fair question. It's a fair question.
Here's the, here's the.
Because.
I was ready for the question.
Are you ready for that question?
You're ready for the question.
We had this conversation.
I think it's, it's a fair question because.
It's a fair question, we've had this conversation. So, I wanna make my little comment, and then if Anthony wants to add anything on to it, I want him to add on to it, but, so, in this, in this contract, I have said that I'm going to pick up the town's municipalities, okay, over a period of time for the donut. So, for every customer I would lose because I turned into bad A.J., I would only be hurting myself. I need the customers to offset what I am paying, or otherwise, this deal wouldn't happen. And just so everyone understands, is the situation that we're really in is, if this, and this is a win-win, one hundred percent, because if this didn't happen the way it happened, there would never most likely ever be a contract in the town of Foxborough ever again, because back three years ago, there was a quote of Foxborough was out of the trash business. And from that day on, they really could have been out of the trash business, but we have this unique situation where someone is willing to come in and still take care of the residents in the town and give them a good, fair price.
At your risk.
At my risk. And that's why it's truly a win-win. And, you know, I hope that everyone has the faith in me that I'm having in them, and this whole thing works out.
Thank you.
And I think the bottom line is, is that we've had this conversation, is that the market will dictate if, in fact, he's being unfair with the residents, and they'll go somewhere else, and that only hurts him ultimately.
Okay.
Thanks, A.J.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Anthony.
Thank you.
So, you're not looking for a vote tonight, but basically a general thumbs up to move forward to continue with the regulations and the contract, Bill?
No, he asked that we review it, and then we'll bring it up next week.
June.
June ninth. Oh, that's okay.
Okay.
So we're just saying, so we'll put this on the agenda for June ninth, and between now and June ninth, if the board can give you comments.
Yes. Any comments on the regulation? Please let me know, so we can finish that up.
And also, comments from the public, if you, you'll take comments from the public also?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
We'll actually post it on the website.
Okay, so the last item on the agenda is, town manager update?
All right. Thank you, thanks.
Thanks, Kate, appreciate it.
All right, thank you for all your help. Just a couple of things. One of the things, of course, was to thank everybody for yesterday's, for yesterday's events, and then also to point out there is, just a couple items here, that there is an annual household hazardous waste day coming up on June sixth to, it'll be held at the Highway Garage, Seventy Elm Street in Foxborough, of course, and it'll be current from nine AM to twelve PM. And there was a whole list of accepted items. If anybody has any questions about this, they should reach, call the Highway Department at five oh eight, five four three one two two eight, and they can, and then they can give you any kind of, and anybody wants to call our office as well, we'd certainly be happy to provide this information, and we'll post this on, get this up on the website as well, so people have seen that. And then one other small thing is that folks have seen the flags posted along, along the streets, which actually is really kind of a nice touch, especially during Memorial Day. But you'll also see that those flags will be posted on Flag Day on June fourteenth, on Fourth of July, Independence Day, August seventh, which is Purple Heart Day, September eleventh, of course, being Patriots Day, well, September, September of Patriot Day, the third Friday in September until after the ceremony the next day, which is POW MIA Day, November eleventh, which is Veterans Day, and December seventh, which is Pearl Harbor Day. So, we have, this is a schedule that was given to me by, by the Veterans Agent, Mike Johns, who, by the way, I do wanna say, give a special note of thanks to his work yesterday in putting the program together, did a terrific job, and as we all know, does a terrific job of representing the community, not only at the local level, but at the state level as well, being the president of the Mass Veterans Service Officers Organization.
Did you notice a lot of those flags were new? That was one of my Eagle Scouts, his ceremony, that was just about a month or so ago. And this, I'm sure there'll be another Eagle Scout that'll wanna add more flags. I know when I was in Scouts, Mike and I talked about, you know, increasing that, too. It really is, it's pretty impressive to see.
Very impressive.
Our troop took, kinda took the lead on helping the VFW about three or four years ago. They were getting up there in age, and they couldn't get too many people to go, so it was always one or two people that would put them out, so our troop seven kind of adopted the VFW, and they go up there every, one of those dates at ten minutes of seven in the morning, help put them out, they get out in ten minutes, come back at six o'clock at night and take them all in, so VFW is very appreciative of that, and I know Mike is as well.
And, I just had a question. Remember, we talked last year about the Purple Heart community and acquiring signs? Do you know, because I talked to Mike Johns about that Monday.
Yeah, I haven't talked to him recently. We should talk.
I know, I know there were a number of, variety of the signs, and it was decided having one like at each entrance to the town, but I don't know if that's gone any further.
You know something, I have not talked to him recently about this, so I'll have to follow up with him.
Because August seventh is, is the Purple Heart Day, so it'd be nice if we could, if we could do them, you know, rather than rushing it at the, at the end.
No, I agree.
If we could do that.
That's, that's a good thought. We'll, we'll follow up with that.
Okay, thank you.
And then the other thing, I just, a special note to all the graduates from Foxborough High, coming up on February seventh, I know, I'm sorry, June seventh, rather, June seventh at two PM, there'll be a special ceremony at Foxborough High School, congratulations to all the graduates. I know somebody here has a graduate this year, so congratulations. Have two?
No, I have one.
Actually, two.
He's got one.
All right, congratulations to both of them. I got one, too, by the way, so, February, February fifth, I'm sorry, January fifth, June fifth, rather. I'm really, I'm really losing my mind, I think. June fifth as well, so hopefully I'll be there. But congratulations to all the graduates, and I hope that their summers and their new destinations in college all go well, and whatever they plan to do after college, after high school, so congratulations to them, that's all.
Thank you.
Mary Beth, do you have anything, or did you?
Yeah, do you wanna mention, I just wanted to mention that today, we swore in a lateral transfer, new police officer.
Yes, thank you.
His name is Kenneth Fitzgerald, and he came to us from the town of Maydick, where he had about sixteen years of experience, and he brings some really great skills. He has accident reconstruction training, and so today was his, well, I think it was his official first day today, and so we're gonna bring him into a future meeting, so that you can meet him.
Excellent.
Very good.
Thank you. Now, we've got about seven action items that we wanna go through, so do you wanna read through them?
Yep. Action item number one, Bluefin Lounge, we could for approval of entertainment license edition. I move that the board of selectmen approve the seven-day entertainment license for Bluefin Lounge.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion?
Looks like they're just looking to add acoustic.
Guitar.
Yeah, Saturdays and Sundays from two to five and one to four during the middle of the day.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Okay, number two, Boydin Library Gifts. I move that the board of selectmen approve the acceptance of a gift from the Foxborough J.C.'s in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to the Boydin Library, and I'd like to thank the J.C.'s for all that they do for our town.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero, thank you.
Okay, number three, another one for Boydin. I move that the board of selectmen approve the acceptance of a gift from the Foxborough Moms Club in the amount of one hundred dollars to the Boydin Library, and I'd like to thank the Foxborough Moms Club for their generous donation.
Second. Motion made and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Okay, and before, this one's going to the council on aging. I move that the board of selectmen approve the acceptance of a gift from Daniel St. Laurent, Stop and Shop with gratitude, of a fifty-dollar gift certificate to be used toward food purchased by an instructor for a nutrition class at the senior center.
Second. Motion made and seconded, further discussion on the gift? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the next two are Hackney licenses. I move that the board of selectmen renew the Hackney license of Wallace W. Chase, Jr.
Do we know where these pink notes came from? Those are for you.
The motion was made, seconded?
Second.
Motion seconded, further discussion? And thank you for these notes, they're actually helpful, because over the years, these are the questions that we've had, if there've been problems or things like that, so this is very helpful. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
All right, another Hackney license with a pink note. I move that the board of selectmen renew the Hackney license of Robert Eugene Raymond.
Second. Motion made and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the last one is from Sharon Watson. I move that the board of selectmen approve the request by Sharon Watson for three thousand dollars from the Economic Development Fund to hire Megan McNulty for a business guide to starting a business in downtown design guidelines.
Second. And the discussion? I like, I like the resume, and I like the fact that under the skills, there's ArcGIS, Revit, Adobe Suite, SketchUp.
Good stuff.
I think there's a lot of use that you can use with those skills, and it's a pretty impressive resume.
The Economic Development Fund, I mean, how is, what's the source of revenue for that? Is that a grant?
That's when you, when you change, when you get new licenses, that part of it comes from.
The monies flow into that?
Yeah, monies flow into that.
So it's a standing account with the town?
Right.
Okay.
And their letters, I mean, the summary is downtown design guidelines, so to guide the reuse of construction of properties in downtown and bringing business into downtown, so that's, kinda goes in hand in hand when you get a permit.
We actually developed a business guide, and did them, which actually Sharon really likes, and has been trying to help adopt as part of the town for Foxborough as well.
So motion was made and seconded and discussed, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Good luck to Megan McNulty. And under information, there was three items on here, there's a apartment, accessory-use apartment, building permit for thirty-seven Hayden Drive, which is going through the planning board, and the two thousand fifteen corporate training course, and actually, the site plan for the new town hall is now filed, and that hearing is coming up.
Thursday night?
Thursday night, so anyone interested in going to see the town hall, site plan review with the planning board? Be worth seeing.
To make a motion that we lose the meeting?
Second. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Thank you, everybody, good night.